I'd like to welcome you all here tonight to the City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd on the year 2013. At this time, we'd like to have an invocation by Dallas Paulson, after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance given to us by Chief Brandon. If you'd all rise.
Please join me in the Lord of Prayer. We ask that you be with all of our servicemen and women wherever they're at, whether they're at home or abroad, that you be, have a hand over them to protect them in everything that they're doing, along with our people here in Maricopa that serve us in the Police and Fire Department. Keep them safe. We ask that you be with our leaders of the city here as they meet on this night in the City Council to make the decisions that are right for all of the residents of Maricopa, and that you be with them as they contemplate all of the items that are in front of them. Be with our federal and state government and be with them in all of their decisions that they make. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Dallas.
We're getting to do the call card first.
Do the call card.
Okay. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march!
Thank you. May be seated. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Chappados.
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Councilmember Potter.
Present.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to item three, the Proclamation, Acknowledgements, and Award. This time, we're going to hear a presentation introducing the city's Operation Welcome Home event. Paul.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city of Maricopa has taken on opportunities to offer a welcome home to returning veterans and currently serving members of the armed forces to just recognize their service, and when they come back to Maricopa, we'll make sure they feel special and honor that. So tonight is one of those special evenings. We're going to be doing that, and so we have two people we'll be honoring. The first person is First Sergeant Keith D. Brown, and, Mr. Mayor, I invite you down to stand with First Sergeant. And Councilman Potter, you're going to come down and read the bio. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, we honor First Sergeant Keith D. Brown, United States Army. First Sergeant Brown was born and raised in Hagerstown, Maryland. In 1985, at the age of 20, Keith Brown enlisted in the Army, serving in New Jersey, Virginia, Missouri, West Virginia, California, and Arizona, along with a tour of duty in Hainaut, Germany. In the first of his three assignments in Virginia, Charlottesville to be exact, First Sergeant Brown met his wife of 12 years, Nicole. The Browns went on to have four children: Keith, Jr., 24, who also serves in the U.S. Army; Matthew, 20; Landon, 13; Brianna, 9. The Browns have lived in Maricopa for five and a half years and say they love the hometown feeling. First Sergeant Brown holds a Bachelor's of Science in Business, in Marketing, and Administration, and since retiring on January 31st of 2013, has taken employment with the Arizona Automotive Institute. First Sergeant Keith Brown, welcome home.
But we're not done yet.
That's right.
No. We also would like to, are honoring tonight Private First Class Coral Hazlitt, who has returned from Afghanistan. So, Private Hazlitt, please come forward, and Councilwoman Gussi is going to speak to her.
All right. Tonight, we also honor Private First Class Coral Hazlitt, United States Army. PFC Hazlitt was born in Michigan but actually grew up in northwest Ohio. In 2005, her family moved to Maricopa. She graduated from Maricopa High School in 2011. A true hometown girl. Coral chose to join the U.S. Army over other scholarships that were offered to her because she would be able to work in the Army Intelligence. PFC Hazlitt attended training in Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, Fort Wachukka in Arizona, and Fort Lewis in Washington. PFC Hazlitt was then deployed to Bagram, Afghanistan, in May of 2012, and has returned home to Maricopa on her leave. PFC Hazlitt achieved her goal of serving in the Army Intelligence, holding the highest security clearance in the military. This is all we could say about that. PFC Hazlitt anticipates being deployed again, but she is not certain where as of right now. Her mom adds that she is physically, mentally, and financially strong, and for a 20-year-old, that is pretty amazing. So, PFC Hazlitt, welcome home.
Now, Mr. Mayor, don't go anywhere. We also have one more presenter who wanted to say a few words. It's Richard Hall, who's one of our veteran representatives from Maricopa.
As a fellow vet, I can't say anything that isn't already being said, and I do appreciate where I'm coming from, but just a little nostalgia. These two people up here represent the best of the best, not only the S-2 level, but the top. Sorry, First Cl- or, top. Brown, Brown, Keith, that's what I'm trying to get out. Nothing like being nervous. Anyhow, a little nostalgia. Forty-seven years ago, I put boots on the ground in a foreign country. These people did the same thing. Not 47 years ago. Forty-six years ago, I came back to the States. These people did the same thing. I came back to hate, dissension, a lot of other things like this. These people came back what I call full circle. I am so proud of what the people in the United States and the people in Maricopa are doing for these veterans, and I thank them for that.
Don't go anywhere. We also have a couple of certificates of acknowledgement that we'd like to have the mayor give, so.
Yeah, perfect. All right. So, crisscross these here. We have for First Sergeant Keith D. Brown, it just says, "Be hereby known, the City of Maricopa," excuse me, "the City Council of the City of Maricopa is part of the City of Maricopa's Operation Welcome Home, is proud to recognize First Sergeant Keith D. Brown on this the second day of April 2013 for his service to his country in the United States Army and for his safe return home to Maricopa." I'll keep it short. It says the same thing, but to Private First Class Coral Hazlitt. So, to the both of you, welcome home.
One more. We have some gifts from the American Legion Auxiliary, but no speaking part. She has some things that she'd like to bestow upon our honorees, so if you want to.
On behalf of the Maricopa American Legion Auxiliary, we would like to thank you for your service, and Coral, you're a true inspiration for us women, being a soldier.
Thank you.
And now, I'd like to ask the rest of council and the vice mayor to come forward and join in front for some pictures.
Move in here.
Welcome home.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take a last second to thank everybody who helped me put this together tonight, all the members of the Maricopa Vets, Jackie Scholz and Kathy Erwin, and a special thanks go to Sequoia Pathway, the principal, Pat Heeway, at Sequoia Academy, and for Kaitlin McNulty, who is our singer tonight, who came from Pathway. So, all of these people worked with me to put this together, and we're just so happy to be able to do this. Thank you all.
Let's give Kaitlin a round of applause. She did a great job today. Thank you very much to everybody who participated tonight, and also in the opportunity you had this past week to, if you got a chance to go to Coral Coming Home, it was very exciting. So, thank you very much. Excuse me. With that, let's move on to the report from the mayor. At this time, I have a few things to quickly run through. First off here, I just wanted to let you know that there is a Maricopa Veterans Town Hall that Councilwoman Gussi has been instrumental in helping with, and that will be held Saturday, April 20th. So, if you get a chance to write that down, there will be more information to follow, but Saturday, April 20th, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m., and that will be held at the Rotary Park, as I understand it at this moment. So, watch for more information to come there. Also, those interested in the zoning code rewrite, there is a Diagnosis and Evaluation Paper that is available per public review on the Zoning Code Rewrite website. It can be linked to by going to the City of Maricopa website, but I'll give you the exact address here in a second. The paper includes broad recommendations for the new zoning code and would be presented to the task force at 6:00 p.m. tomorrow and here at MUSD. So, all members of the public are encouraged to attend, and the City Council plans to discuss this item at the May 7th meeting. So, again, we are always looking for your input as we move forward in the zoning code. That address, that you can look it up online, is http://zoningcode.mericopa-az.gov. So, again, http://zoningcode.mericopa-az.gov. A few other announcements. I know that Supervisor Smith is here tonight, and I don't want to steal his thunder, but I know that he has put together also a town hall, so to speak, here for this Saturday. It will be here at the MUSD building, right in this room, and Representative Steve Smith, Representative Adam Quasman, Senator Al Melvin, and Pinellas County Supervisor Tony Smith, perhaps among others, will be here, and this is an awesome opportunity to come and meet your elected officials that represent you at the county and state level. So, we encourage you to do that, come and talk with them, ask them your questions, and just get a chance to shake their hand, get to know them. That's what they're here for. So, again, that will be held from 10:00 to noon, or 12:00 p.m., 10:00 to 12:00, and that will be here again in this room. This is also the time in which we talk a little bit about the different things we've had the opportunity to go to. Today, we had the opportunity to attend a NACET, which is our new business incubators grand opening. One of the things that business incubators do is they help to grow businesses in the towns or cities in which they reside, and this is a very, very positive step. The City Council authorized this here about six months ago, and they're finally getting off the ground, and they have a great track record in other areas, both Flagstaff and Gateway Community College. And so, we were able to, some of us were able to go and witness some of the success stories that they have had, and so I encourage you to look them up and contact City Hall if you have any additional questions or you're interested in them. Had a chance to attend with Councilmember Brown, the Lower Santa Cruz River Alliance today. We were able to meet with Congressman Gosar, as well as a variety of other people. For those of you that know, the City of Maricopa has some very unique challenges when it comes to flooding, and so one of the things that we're always trying to accomplish is, how do we do this, rather than doing it on an individual basis, how do we work as a regional partner and work with all of the different people involved? Now, this is a big problem. It runs all the way from southern Arizona to where the water dumps out onto the Gila River Indian Reservation, and it runs north. So, all of us along Coolidge, Casa Grande, Eloy, some northern parts of Sarita and Tucson, and certainly Maricopa, and the three tribes, the Ton, Odom, Gila River, as well as Och Chen, they also are affected by this. So, it's something that we're trying to work on a regional solution for. Congressman Gosar gave us some invaluable advice as to how to navigate the federal bureaucracy, which is a never-ending problem, but he gave us some good advice along those lines. Also, just so you understand, one of the big problems that we are fighting here as a city is what is known as the TPT bill that is going through the legislature. You've heard me talk about it every time. I've attended almost every single conference or committee hearing, press conference on this subject. One of the things that we have the opportunity to do is they are looking at taking away our construction sales tax. Well, for any of you that understand how that works is that cities, that's one of the only few tools left in our toolbox in which we can pay for growth. So, if someone builds a house at the end of the road, and there's no road there, and they want one, well, that's how we pay for it, is when that house sells, we collect a construction sales tax. Right now, the bill that is currently going through the House and the Senate has that taken out, and it could cost us, the City of Maricopa, some $20 million over the next several fiscal years. I don't know about you, but $20 million is a really big hit to the bottom line and to the budget. So, it's something that we're really trying to take every opportunity we can to work within the process while the legislature is in session. We also had the opportunity this week, or this past week, to attend a GPEC quarterly meeting. This was a great opportunity in which, again, GPEC is called the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. It's one of the memberships that we belong to, in which we are constantly striving to find ways to bring businesses to the City of Maricopa. They help us in strategies and acquiring leads and going out there and dealing with international strategies, et cetera. And one of the things that sometimes they don't understand is that, you know, mayors and councils as a municipality need the help of the CEOs of these big corporations to accomplish things, and so we had the opportunity to talk about the TPT problem and get a lot of the major CEOs of some of our largest corporations such as Intel, ASU, the Diamondbacks, et cetera, on board with us to help take our fight to the legislature and deal with this TPT. We also had the opportunity to attend the Tucson Streets and Roads Conference last Thursday. This was a big issue with ADOT, and it talks about, a lot about the different challenges that we face here in the state of Arizona. We had lots of engineers and representatives. I know that our interim engineer, Ray, was there, and he was able to guide us and teach us some interesting variations on creative financing and ways to look in and outside the box and see what some of the other states are doing successfully. One of the models that we currently look at very heavily is the state of Texas, and they do a lot of very successful roads and transportation planning by using some interesting financing options. So, those are things that we're looking to bring to a legislative level back here to the state of Arizona so that we can get a lot more transportation rolling. And finally, I would mention the 347 overpass again. One of the things that we have received instruction and counsel from one of our former mayors, Kelly Anderson, who now sits on the State Board of Transportation, is that we need to be attending all of the State Board of Transportation meetings. And so, one of the things that I'm going to ask council is that I have plans in my schedule throughout the rest of the year to attend almost every single one of those meetings and go up to the Call of the Public and talk about the 347 overpass and the need we have. Mr. Anderson gave us some really interesting notes in saying that if we are constantly at these meetings, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, and so one of the things that we heavily believe in is being able to go and network with these individuals. And so, there will be times in which I'm not able to go, and so I will call upon you, council, to help fill our shoes, but I think it's absolutely crucial that we maintain a representative presence there so that we can always be letting them know about the value of this overpass. It is really in one of the federal government's top priorities. However, until we are considered shovel-ready, we're kind of at a disadvantage, and so we've really got to work closely with ADOT and the federal government to make this happen. So, just something we're working on. That next ADOT meeting is in Tucson, and it's April 12th, if you wish to attend. So, I believe that concludes my long-winded mayor's report, and I appreciate you listening. So, with that, we're going to move into the report from the city manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the general public. I have a couple announcements this evening. First is that you may recall that we are undergoing an information technology audit, and the consultants are here tonight, so I just want to introduce them. We have Jeff Lockett and Iriana Arias. They're with LBL Technology Partners, and they're here tonight to observe how we do our meetings and get a real understanding of how the city's needs for information technology are so that we can create a plan for going forward to make sure that we have that kind of basic infrastructure for doing business. So, welcome and thank you for attending this evening. The other thing is that you may have noticed on your seat was a publication, so I'd like to draw your attention to this and tell you a little bit about it, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the community report for the City of Maricopa. This is the first-ever publication of its kind by the city. It is a collaborative effort. It was completely designed internally by Ms. Casey and her team of Latricia Woods and Ruben Garcia, and you'll see all, on the inside back cover, you'll see a listing of all the departments and employees that took part in gathering this data. This is a publication that was a vision of mine when I first came to the city, and for the past year, staff has been working very diligently to gather this data and put it together in time for our 10th anniversary so that we have a community report. It's an annual report. It helps us market our city. It helps us keep our citizens informed. There's some lovely photography in there that Mr. Garcia participated in, actually took some of the photography and obtained it. So, we're really excited to present this to you and the city, and this is something that you'll see every year. We will update this and keep this trail of information going, so please join me in thanking them and telling them what a great job they've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to move to Call the Public, and I do have a speaker card for someone who was asked to do Call the Public first, and so we'll let them go. Let me just remind you that, again, in the Call the Public, it's not typically a time in which the council answers back or, you know, deals with questions. It's an opportunity in which you have to address your council. However, I would ask that you keep your comments to approximately three minutes or less, and also, just if you draw your attention to the agenda, it's, I think it's important that we understand that we need to refrain from any personal attacks or derogatory statements about any city employee, fellow citizen, or anyone else, whether in the audience or not, and I think that's a key fashion in being civil. So, with that, John Beatty, would you like to please come up and address us first? Thank you, John.
In case anyone was wondering, TPT is Transaction Privilege Tax, and that's Arizona's version of sales tax, so just in case you didn't understand what he was saying.
Thank you.
My name is John Beatty. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, the Maricopa Stake here in Maricopa, and I want to invite everyone to this Family Preparedness Fair. It says, "Are you ready?" Saturday, April 20th, 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. is a Family Preparedness Fair. It's at 37280 West Bolin Road in Maricopa, hosted by the Maricopa Stake of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Our Heavenly Father created this beautiful earth with all its abundance for our benefit and use. His purpose is to provide for our needs as we walk in faith and obedience. He has lovingly commanded us to prepare every needful thing so that, should adversity come, we may care for ourselves and our neighbors and support bishops who they care for others. There will be many seminars, 20 minutes long, every half hour, starting at 10:30 a.m. These include emergency management tips, financial preparedness, important documents to have on hand, and spiritual preparedness. We will have booths throughout the event, home canning and dry packing, bread making and food safety, alternative shelters, light sources and heating, communications and alternative power sources, alternative cooking sources and water storage, employment, first aid, growing your own food and sprouting, preparedness, where do I start, spiritual preparedness, and we will also have the Maricopa Fire Department on hand to teach safety in the home, and the Maricopa Police Department will be on hand to do child fingerprinting. So, we'd like to, everyone to put this on your calendar, April 20th this month, and 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And I have flyers. I'll put them outside. Council, City Council, would you like one of these?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Counsel and done.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, today I saw Maricopa. I saw you welcoming our community like our community has always been. I'm handing you some stuff for you to look at later.
Thank you.
But what I saw today was what our community has been built on and has always been. What I've gone through the last few weeks, couple weeks, is not that. We've put on the events for the City of Maricopa for the last year. We've done a good job. We've done exactly what you've asked us to do. We've made it sustainable. We've brought more vendors in. We've been at the budget that you've asked us to do. But I happened to get a memo that came from city staff, from a newspaper reporter, about all the things that we've done wrong. Never one time have I received a written or verbal complaint from the city staff or from the council, but a city reporter had an internal city report on the things that I've done wrong. Now, many of those things simply are not true, and we were told in February that the city was no longer... And we were told in February that the city was no longer going to put this out to an RFP, that they were taking it back. I've spoken to many of you. Apparently, you guys didn't get the memo. Apparently, you found out on March 15th that the direction you gave city staff of making this community event has been changed. That was changed by city staff. They have, in this memo that went to the media and was put in the newspaper, I have to apologize about a couple of things. First off, the memo says that I was unprofessional and discourteous to staff. I admit, I go to meetings in flip-flops. Chief Stahl thinks it's funny. I am unprofessional when I go to meetings. I admit that. If I was ever discourteous to any staff, I deeply apologize. I never, ever would want to do that, and if I have done that, I do apologize. The memo also says that Action Alliance had a drunk staff member driving a golf cart, cussing at people. We had over 100 volunteers at that event. Thankfully, the LDS Church brought 75 of us and helped us put on an amazing event. But we did have one, again, I apologize, unauthorized volunteer, who I don't even know his name, who got on a golf cart, and he was drinking, and the moment we found out about it, our staff escorted him off the property. Action Alliance staff has never been drunk at any event that we've put on, and it's a distortion of the truth to say that that was anyone associated other than one of the 100 volunteers that were helping us. Police department did a fantastic job at that event. I appreciate it. The fire department, working with Eddie, was fantastic. Brenda, you're amazing to work with. I thank you for all your help. Apparently, the city has, they had numerous complaints about us not giving them 48 hours to approve everything. Let me tell you how I sent them an email. Hey, I understand you guys have 48 hours to approve something, but if you could do it sooner, we'd appreciate it. Why? Because we wanted to let all the business community, and I admit, I pushed the envelope every time I said, "You know, you have 48 hours," and every time they came back and said, "Okay, it's done. We're good with that." Spelling errors. Apparently, I have horrible spelling errors in the program that you have there. Absolutely. Discovery Community Church is spelled wrong. I personally apologize to the pastor. He accepted my apology. But I did print 20,000 of them and mailed them to every home and business in this town. So one spelling error multiplied 20,000 times, I guess, could be numerous. They're claiming that I have over, or I have added to the attendance report. I'm going to tell you guys a secret, new folks. City has no idea how many people come to these events. We go into a meeting afterwards, and we guess. I have never stated how many people have ever been at an event until after the city has given me the official number, and they have no idea. Can't do it at that park. It's a guess. But I have never said a number that wasn't already approved by the city. Salsa Festival commercial. Apparently, the folks who looked at the commercial that they approved don't live in the city because the one that they approved that went in the city did not have any of the mistakes that they said are in it. And yes, even in your packet is the email that we sent to you and the council and the mayor inviting you to be a part of this event. Guys, I am, I'm, my, we've done this, my family has done this for 50 years. Five generations, we have put on events for this city. My great-grandmother, your great-grand, your grandmother, my grandmother for 20 years ran the events for this city. And then my family, my aunts, my uncles, and for them to come out, all they had to do was say, "We want to do it ourselves," and we would have gracefully walked away. But to do the things that are simply not true in this is wrong, and I think we're owed an apology. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Will. Cindy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It's with a saddened heart that I come before you tonight. We've done our best. We've come together as a community. We've brought all of the organizations together to the best of our ability. Thank you to the LDS Church for 75 kids coming out to stuff bags of chips. Thank you to Free to Lay for donating chips that they did not want to donate. $6,000 worth of chips, and I went and begged. Thank you to CenturyLink for putting $15,000 on the table to make these events come to pass. Thank you to the major sponsors who have stepped up. Thank you to the numerous sponsors who said, "We don't want to be in the parking lot. If you can get us on the field, we'd love that." Thank you to the community members like Firestorm Cheer, who go over the entire field inch by inch by inch to pick up pieces of gum and trash after salsa. And thank you for them putting on gloves and doing that for us. And that is all a community who loves this town. They don't do it for council, for a mayor, for city staff. These events were born out of this community. And to say that a logo is misplaced or to say that these need to be redirected, I understand that you maybe were not well-informed about the direction that maybe you had given. I know that we all sat in this room, and many of you are new to the council, and many of you called me and said, "What can we do to support these events? These are community events. This is, this is a town who is willing to take responsibility for those events and cut the budget." When you told me to do the events and cut $30,000, I said, "Okay, I can find $30,000." When I went to do the Great American Barbecue and did a squirt gun war, that event cost me $6,000. But that's okay. I didn't go back to the city and say, "You know what? We're a little short. Can you help me with my budget?" I said, "No, we'll make it up in another way." So we took responsibility as a community for these events. And it does sadden me that we've changed direction on this, but I respect it. I respect your decision. I respect staff's decision. And I feel honestly that a three-page report, when I had never received a single complaint from you, but to come to me, I was informed in February that we weren't doing these events anymore because we had a dynamic staff who could take them on. I'm good with that. But at this time, in your packet of emails that kind of, just kind of back up the facts of what we have been accused of doing, I just wanted to include our letter that says that we will not be doing the Great American Barbecue because I don't have another $6,000 to spend on that event. But we, as a community, will support these events. People love coming together. They love the quality of life in this town, and we're just sad that we have, as a community, as many other nonprofit groups have been, had the door shut in our face. And so we just hope that you can work through this, and we can all be better at the end. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Cindy.
This is actually my, I'm Richard Benavides. I'm representing Rise and Shine Exceptional Services. We are a private school and a licensed respite center, and a lot of you might not quite know what that means, so I'll kind of explain it to you. First of all, I'd like to say this is my first city council meeting anywhere, ever, and I'm actually impressed. This is really cool. I like the whole welcome-home thing. It got all goosebumpy. That was, that was awesome. So, and I mean, thank you for your service. That's really cool. But I work with kids, so I'm not the most formal guy in the world. I'm sorry. But I will say that I've had the opportunity over the past couple of, past two months to work with the Truitts and with the Rise and Shine staff, and I've been amazed at what they do, honestly, with so little. I mean, it is an amazing place. The first time I walked in there, I felt like it was something that Disney had barfed. I mean, it was like, every kid was like, so like, they fit. I've never seen, like, so many special children who normally would be ignored, fit, and be loved, and just come up to you and talk, and have no problem. This is like their home. It is one of the most beautiful places I've ever been. It's also really, really, really hard work, so it's a little harder to say that after you've had to do, you know, dishes for an hour. But it really is cool to be a part of that, and I just want to invite you guys to see what's going on. On April 6th, so this Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., we are actually going to be having an open house. We've been able to expand our facilities a little bit, be able to use a little more of the building that we are in. We've done a lot of renovating, painted some really cool stuff, done some really amazing things in there, again, with so little, and we would love for you guys to see that. We are actually located, it's 16540 North Porter. To give you kind of an idea of where that is, Porter, it doesn't end at Walmart. It goes over the tracks. I know it seems like it ends, but it doesn't. At least, I thought it did. So you go over that, you don't go, you don't go into the Santa Rosa Springs, you keep on going, and before you hit this monstrous dip, and you'll see it if you ever go out there, and you may already know what it is, but right before there, there's a little house on the right side, and that's actually where we're located. And we're going to just open up our house to you, essentially, to see the amazing stuff that's going on there with these kids. I know there are, there's some grant money being dispersed, and we would, if you ever want to see a dollar go far, I'll tell you what. Give it to, give it to Rise and Shine. It'll go, like, it'll go really, really far to help people. But we are doing a lot of really cool stuff. We actually have preschool program now. We have before and after-school programming, an online Rise and Shine store. A lot of parents of autistic children have really wanted to know kind of what we have, what our resources are, and we definitely want to make those available and let people see exactly what we use and what we, you know, just so we can kind of help that community of autistic, you know, children and their families, and other special needs as well. And we also have created a, the Rise and Shine Schoolhouse Incorporated, some nonprofit support organization to provide scholarships to students for tuition. We actually make sure that, if at all possible, parents do not have to pay anything out of pocket because special-needs children, you know, their families go through so much, and it is so hard for them to be able to scrimp and save, to be able to pay more tuition because they had this therapy and that. And so we, you know, do whatever we can through donations and through grants and everything else to go ahead and do that. And so, again, the money would go to a great place. And our school actually isn't just for special-needs kids, it's for their families as well, and also for gifted and talented kids. So we have some really, really smart kids. I know because I helped teach them. They're smart, like, there's, and, you know, I'm not dumb, I promise. You know, these kids are like, wow! And it really is a cool place. We currently offer specialized programming for visually impaired, autistic, and physically handicapped students, as well as, of course, the gifted, and also the medically fragile students. And, you know, essentially, our goal is to provide specialized education for students in the community where they live because too many of these students that go through this have to be bussed out, have to ride an hour to be able to get good services that they need. And that shouldn't be the case in Maricopa. We're a town of 40,000 people. We can do better than that. And so I would love for you guys to come and see how we're trying to do that. Again, south of Walmart, keep on going on the tracks. If you hit the crazy dip, you've gone too far. 10:00 a.m. Saturday morning until 2:00 p.m. I hope to see you there.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, fellow citizens of Maricopa. My name's Rosemary Kuzmic. I'm here tonight representing the Maricopa Police Department Victims Assistance Program. I'm the volunteer in charge of that program. And I want to talk to you a little bit about National Crime Victims Rights Week. I don't know if you've heard of it or not, but it is by name a national event. It goes on all over the country. In each county throughout the country, it's the county attorney's office that kind of coordinates the events within each county. It's been going on since 1981, and I know Maricopa hasn't been around that long, but this is the first time that Maricopa is participating in the event. So I'm just so excited about this, and it's really shaping up to be a wonderful thing. We're going to have speakers, of course. You can't have a public event without lots of speakers. But we're also having some fun. We're going to have a clown. We have games for the children, and it's, it's really, we have a victim who's going to speak to us, and I want to thank our police department also for having the foresight to recognize the need for a Victims Assistance Program here in our town. So I'm not going to keep you long, but I do want to let you know that we have this event coming up. It's on Saturday, April 27th, from 9:00 to noon. We're going to hold it in the outdoor area of the First Baptist Church on John Wayne Parkway, just south of the tracks. We do have a poster. I don't know if we're able to put it up in City Hall or not, but we did put one up in the courthouse today, so please keep it in mind. I hope that you'll all come and participate and just support the event. It's just so exciting for Maricopa to finally be doing this, and I'm just looking for you to come and have a good time and support our victims. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. And then, again, the date was Saturday, 29th, 8th?
The 27th. Saturday, the 27th. Victims Week this year is April 21st to April 27th, Sunday through Saturday, and we're holding our event on Saturday, the 27th.
And the times again?
9:00 to noon.
9:00 to noon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cecilia?
All this excitement. My name's Cecilia Estrada Ash. I'm with Maricopa Economic Development Alliance. Good evening to you, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to, as you know, I'm Secretary of Maricopa Economic Development Alliance, also known as MEETA. We were created by the city council as a tool for economic development, and I've been the secretary since its inception. We are part of, Maricopa Economic Development Alliance is a partner with the city of Maricopa that helps support economic development, and we work hand-in-hand with the city for making a great city for Maricopa. I'm here tonight to advise you that we've put together some notebooks for upcoming meeting, and those will be over at the city hall for each and every one of you in preparation for our meeting that's coming up, and we look forward to that meeting, and thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Cecilia. Supervisor, please.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I won't keep my comments too long because of the night I know is going forward very quickly, but as a, just for the record, I'm Anthony Smith, Supervisor, District Four, and District Four runs from Maricopa all the way down to near Tucson, including the communities of Maricopa, Hidden Valley, Thunderbird Farms, Arizona City, Red Rock, over to Saddle Brook and parts of Morana. So it's, it's very wide and very extensive, very diverse, but I just want to, for city councils, come and give, on a quarterly basis, a report as far as what I've been doing on your behalf and the behalf of District Four, and be able to report as far as some of the things that I see coming down the line as far as future activities. First thing I had to do was create District Four. District Four didn't exist before, and so it was carved out of some other districts, and so I was able to establish our field office. We're given an official field office, and I chose Maricopa. And it's located just next to the library, behind the Pinal County Health Building. It's a desert-green building, and we're my executive assistant, and I have an office apiece, and we had to create everything from the office space to the staplers and the stickies and everything else that goes along with it. But we jumped in and started getting involved in some projects that, as, sitting in your place as city council, and especially as mayor, I sometimes wish I had more time to devote. I think I now am able to operate on a more regional sense, and one of the first projects I grabbed hold of was to help clean up the trash that's along 347 and the median. I contacted Rod Lane of the Tucson District for ADOT, and Kelly Anderson, our Maricopa former mayor, sits on the State Board of Transportation, and between that type of leverage, we were able to get ADOT to, I think, spend about a week and a half cleaning up the median on 347. It looks much nicer. In fact, now, isn't that miraculous? It's been replaced by spring flowers. It's beautiful, isn't it? But on a regular basis, where I see it, or others see that it's getting trashy, I want to be able to make that similar call and clean up that median. Been working on a little project to help prepare for Phase One of the Great Separation. That's relocating the Zephyr train car, working with the Maricopa Historical Society and the city of Maricopa regarding the plans. As you may or may not know, the car is owned by Pinal County, and we're looking to be able to eliminate the lease that we have with Union Pacific Railroad and provide that train car in a permanent location in the city of Maricopa. So we're looking at how we can best make that transaction happen and also clear the way for Phase One work for the Great Separation. Some of the advocacy events I've been involved in, I am Pinal County's rep for the Lower Santa Cruz River Alliance, of which that meeting happened today, and I'm also still Vice President of the Interstate 11 Advocacy Group called the Can Do Coalition. This gives me an opportunity to, again, represent Maricopa and this portion of Pinal County and District Four. have this Saturday from 10:00 to noon with the legislative District 11 representatives and the county representatives. This is a nonpartisan town hall. All, both parties have been invited. Anybody that's elected in accounting position or in LD 11 is invited. Also, as far as communications, have offered to report on a quarterly basis. Some of the future activities I have that I want to bring to your attention, you may want to stop down at my office at some point and talk to me a little bit more about that, the details. Is the marijuana dispensary being proposed for the Thunderbird Farms area? You may want to know more information about that. That is going to be on a supervisor's meeting probably in April. There's a... We're certainly seeing housing developments starting to pick up, especially in the Hidden Valley area with projects, large projects such as the Red River Ranch Project. There's a box culvert project. That's the Maricopa-Cassagrand Highway. This is at the Santa Cruz River. The design is about 15%, but this would give a more consistent path for vehicles to travel when we have those rain events that the Santa Cruz floods across there. A box culvert would give a drainage way that we would be able to have continuous, all-weather road through that area. We've also been in partnership with Cassagrand, Pinal County, and Maricopa on a project that previous councils started, East-West Corridor. That is on track and proceeding, and I believe has been meeting with ADOT regarding its progress. And, again, I invited Councilmember Chapados was at the meeting of the Board of Supervisors in the work session when we talked about air quality and the possible relocation of the Cowtown Monitor to better represent the air quality in the city of Maricopa's area and also to remove it to freeway for expansion of Maricopa-Cassagrand Highway at some point. So, again, I hope to be able to appear before you on a quarterly basis, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Supervisor. Justin?
I don't want to pass out. I've been standing there a little while. My name is Justin Thornton. I'm the president of the city of Maricopa FOP Lodge 78. I'm also chairman for the Maricopa Officers Council. I'm here tonight to speak to you on behalf of the officers here in Maricopa Police Department. We're very excited. Tonight, or later tonight, you're gonna be going to the E session to provide direction on talks that are going on between the city and these associations here at the Maricopa Police Department. We're excited because we know that you've been elected by the people of Maricopa, people that we know support the Maricopa Police Department, same people that have supported us to decrease crime by 11% and to increase arrests by 13%. The same people that have supported us through various events have provided safety for not only us, but our various partners at the police department like Casper. We're excited tonight that this will be able to move forward and that we'll be able to conclude our talks with the city so that we can move on for the next step in our future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and other citizens. Hello, sir. I just... I'm here as part of the police volunteer unit. And as the mayor knows and city council lady Chapman, excuse me, knows, we just completed this Citizens Academy. Well, we have a couple of things to present, one to the chief of police and one to the fire chief, as a thank you for everything that they did in putting it together, all the people involved. It was a good, very good course, and I would highly recommend it to anybody whenever you put together another one of these. So, if I may...
And you'll notice, each one, your department comes first because I don't want to be framed.
(Laughter) It's just my father told me years ago, never argue with a man with a gun, the Chief Stall. And I don't ever want to have to worry about a house fire, so I'll take care of both of them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and these guys are great. And for what the officers do and the fire department do, you guys have a heck of a deal.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, and that academy was great, so thank you. Anybody else like to come and talk in public? Thank you. Before we move on here, I needed to go back on a couple of things here. First, did want to welcome back Chief Stall. I failed to mention that. I apologize. So, welcome back. We're happy to have you back. And it's good. I also wanted to mention there is a thank you event taking place for the firefighters of both the city of Maricopa and Ochene. Therese, do you want to talk about that here real fast?
Yes.
All right. I knew you did. Come on up. That's gonna be this Saturday, correct? Maybe you can tell us the times and who's invited.
Yes, this is a very, very exciting event, and I'm so proud that Maricopa Seniors is presenting it. It's the Ochene and the Maricopa Firefighters Appreciation Day. This community has just embraced this event like I cannot believe it. We have door prizes that are incredible. We have all kinds of events for the kids to do, and it's strictly for the firefighters and their families. And I'm still accepting donations. So, if there's anybody out there that still wants to give a donation, we'll gladly accept it. But this is a wonderful event, and we just really, really need to embrace our fire department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. With that, thank you very much for all the information tonight.
Where is it? Where? Oh, it's going to be at Rancho de la...
Rancho. Just at Jane Askew Park, I think.
It is from 11 to 2:00. And it's for the firefighters and their families.
Perfect. 11 to 2:00, Jane Askew Park. Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. With that, let's move on here into the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to consent agenda, can I have a motion to approve consent, please?
Second.
It is with the exception of 9.7. Correct. So, let me rephrase that. Motion to approve consent with the exception of 9.7. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the regular agenda at first, 9.7. So, we will start with Tom, and then move to Councilman Potter for any questions.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Item 9.7 tonight is to approve an agreement for a infrastructure improvement plan slash development impact fee study. As you all know, I believe it was the 2010 legislative session, Senate Bill 1525 was passed that requires any communities who levy impact fees to do a study. And this is the beginning process of a... Of fees which would basically take effect in August 2014. It's about a four-month process, and then there's a significant due process along with that for an August 2014 implementation date. And with that, I could certainly answer any questions on that.
Councilman Potter?
Thank you. Couple of questions on the development impact fees. Now, this, if you can reiterate what happened with the state? I understand there was a mandatory... Where there was a freeze in raising the impact fees. Is that still going on, or is... What's the situation with that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Potter, basically Senate Bill 1525 set two deadlines. One deadline was a fee study that was required to be done to be effective January 1st, 2012. We've done that. Those fees are currently in place. Those fees can't change until August 2014. At that point, we go through and we do what they call infrastructure... IIP, Infrastructure Improvement Plan, which basically identifies growth-related capital. It's the impact to the city of Maricopa on what growth is gonna do to us. How do we fund the impact of that growth? In other words, what's the impact to our infrastructure? Primarily streets and parks are the two main things.
Is that related at all to the TPT? Or is that just... Or is it not related? How is that related?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, this, I would say, is indirectly related to TPT. The mayor alluded to a little bit before. We have only a couple of options to fund the impact of growth. One is construction sales tax. The other is impact fees. And basically, impact fees has become extremely restricted with Senate Bill 1525. And basically, what it limits the city to, or any cities, are streets, street improvements, and park improvements. There is very small dollars for the impact of growth for public safety, meaning police and fire. We currently, our fees currently have a little bit in there for police and fire, but it's very, very little. It does not pay for the needs that we have for our public safety. For example, the police substation that's currently planned for the regional park, that is not included in the prior development fee study. And so, things like that, where growth absolutely impacts the need for public safety, we don't... And we won't have impact fees to fund that sort of thing.
And a couple more questions. One is, impact fees includes residential as well as commercial, industrial, any, all across the board regarding...
That's correct. It's both residential and commercial.
Okay. And as far as the transfer of funds, if council approves of it, it'll be moved from contingency, but then repaid back to the general fund with future impact fees? Is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
That's a great question. Basically, how we set it, we have to kick this study off right now. In order to meet the statutory deadlines, it's imperative that we kick the study off right now. The only way we can really fund this right now is through a request for contingency. What we've done, and what you've seen in the CIP plan, is a funding request for the entire impact fee study. Once we get that, if, I shouldn't say once, if that CIP budget is approved, council's authorized to reimburse the general fund for what it has fronted for the impact fee study. In other words, impact fees can pay for impact fee studies, and that's basically what we would do.
Okay. So, the fees, and that's council's discretion, I understand, down the road, we'd have to approve it either way, but they could go up or down anywhere regarding residential, commercial, anything, and it's... Anything's open?
That's absolutely correct. And I don't want to venture to guess what the fees would do. That's why these consultants who specialize in this do what they do. There's general belief what will happen to impact fees. I believe when there's slow growth, generally, impact fees go down. We're experiencing an uptick in growth, so I don't want to venture to guess if it's gonna go up or down at this point. That's why we have the consultant to come in, identify our growth-related capital, and then develop the impact fees.
Any other questions? Are you satisfied?
Was that preceded the legislation passed to limit the impact fees? Was that legislation passed before then? Was it concurrent?
Mr. Mayor, Council, that's a great question. Senate Bill 1525, which was passed in 2010, that really restricted what we could include as growth-related capital.
That was because Mesa was spending all their impact fees doing other things. I mean, that's the history of it. But I want to know, the study, what triggered necessary for studies?
What triggered this particular study? State law. If we want to assess the impact fees, we have to have a study done. Basically, if we do not have a study done effective August 1st, 2014, we can no longer statutorily charge impact fees.
Okay. Has that always been the case?
It was just the case with Senate Bill 1525, which I think it was the 2010 legislative session that was passed. And that's when major changes happened with this.
So, if Mesa had not been greedy, none of this would be necessary?
I can't comment on it.
That's coming from a 10 P boy, Marty. That's coming from a 10 P boy.
Councilman Potter, are you satisfied with questions? Any other questions? With that, can I have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve 9.7.
Have a motion? Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 9.7. Item 10.1, Resolution of the Mayor and Council. City of Maricopa ordering the sale of the General Obligation Bonds, Series B, 2013, and the total aggregate principal amount not to exceed $33 million for the completion of the Copper Sky Recreational Complex. Recreation authorizes the Finance and Administrative Services Director to finalize matters in the notice of sale and approve the form, use, and distribution of the preliminary official statement with respect to the bonds. This is for discussion and action. Tom?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. We're gonna do a very, very limited tag-team approach. I have Greg Swartz, who is the city's financial advisor on such deals as this. He's got many, many years of experience on this and will certainly get into any technicalities and I'll definitely hit the high points. A little bit of history. November 2008, the city of Maricopa voters authorized the city to issue $65.5 million for parks, recreation, and library improvements. And basically, what the ballot measure says is these, this authorization could be paid back with secondary property taxes. March 2010, the city issued its first $20 million general obligation geo-bond issuance for park and land acquisition, which we now know is the Copper Sky Recreation Complex. If you recall back in September, council authorized staff to proceed with full build-out of this park. And basically, what you have on the agenda tonight is the first step in the process to issue general obligation bonds, basically funds the completion of the Copper Sky Recreation Complex. Like I said, it's the first step in a series of events to sell general obligation bonds, and the resolution authorizes a not-to-exceed amount of $33 million for a public sale set at a public... Or set at a specific date that we have yet to determine. And it allows the finance director to approve certain matters in the notice of sale documents. It's a very legislative-driven and somewhat complicated process, and that's why we have services of a financial advisor in this transaction. A quick timetable tonight, we're ordering the resolution. The upcoming council meeting, April 16th. We will act on a bond ordinance or resolution. I believe it's gonna be a resolution. This is the first time that the city of Maricopa is going out on its own credit. It basically means we are going to make a pitch to Moody's and Standard and Poor's, who will then turn around and rate our credit. So, we will have rating agency interactions. We've determined with the help of Mr. Swartz, this is the cheapest way to go. We honor about May 22nd, we will get the ratings back from the rating agencies, and then we will go to, basically, put it out for competitive bid, who wants to purchase our general obligation bonds in early June with the closing and the funding set for June 26th. And I'm gonna leave this one to Greg, and if you don't mind.
Mayor Price, members of the council, my name is Greg Swartz. I'm with Piper Jaffrey. We are a bond underwriting and advising firm located in Minneapolis. I'm in our Phoenix offices. I've had the pleasure to service the city's financial advisor since 2006. As Tom suggested, this is essentially your first public sale of bonds. You sold bonds in 2010 through a state, what we call a bond bank, the Greater Arizona Development Authority. The Greater Arizona Development Authority was...
And then, we will go to, basically, put it out for competitive bid. Who wants to purchase our general obligation bonds in early June, with the closing and the funding set for June 26th? And I'm going to leave this one to Greg, and if you don't mind.
Mayor Price, members of the council, my name is Greg Swartz. I'm with Piper Jaffray. We are a bond underwriting and advising firm located in Minneapolis. I'm in our Phoenix offices. I've had the pleasure to service the city's financial advisor since 2006. As Tom suggested, this is essentially your first public sale of bonds. You sold bonds in 2010 through a state, what we call a bond bank, the Greater Arizona Development Authority. The Greater Arizona Development Authority was recently downgraded by virtue of the fact that the legislature raided the money they previously had given the Greater Arizona Development Authority. Secondly, the agency, the parent agency that oversaw the Greater Arizona Development Authority was essentially eliminated in favor of a private Arizona Department of Commerce or Commerce Authority. So there's no parent agency. The board hasn't met in more than a year, and no one's returning phone calls for a variety of reasons. So, we suggested to staff that you pursue your own public sale. So to that end, it's important to note that tonight, you're not creating any liability. Tonight is just one of two steps, formal actions, that you will take to delegate and authorize staff to proceed with selling your second series of general obligation bonds. There are numerous opportunities throughout this process to simply pull back. What I intend to do as your financial advisor is we're going to schedule approximately a week where I would like to try to sell these bonds. If the week before, we don't like what's going on, then we're going to retreat. If in that week, we don't like what's going on in the marketplace, we will pull back. The goal is to sell your bonds when there's the least amount of other Arizona issuers in the marketplace. The goal is to sell your bonds when there's the least amount of damaging headlines, whether it be Cypress, or whatever the circumstance might be. The market wants to be conservative. The market wants to invent reasons why you should pay more interest. And so, we're trying to avoid those kinds of things. So it'll be a range of days that we will attempt to sell the bonds. But it's important, again, to note that tonight, you're not creating any liability. You're simply authorizing staff to proceed with noticing the sale. Two weeks from tonight, you will give what's known. So tonight is what I call an ordering resolution. You're authorizing staff to proceed with the sale. Two weeks from tonight, on April 16th, you will adopt a bond resolution or a bond ordinance. It goes into much greater detail about the parameters under which staff can proceed with the sale of bonds. We are targeting a tax rate of $1.76. So if a homeowner with a home valued at $100,000, that rate would be $1.76 for every, essentially, all the taxable value in that home. That would work out to approximately $176 a year. That secondary target tax rate includes your existing debt, as well as the proposed debt. And so, if you ask questions about what the length of the bonds will be, what the final term of the bonds will be, it's all driven by that target tax rate. We may be able to do these bonds in 15 years. We may be able to do them in 25 years. It just depends on how the market reacts. So that $1.76 is essentially your revenue constraint, and then we design the bond structure to follow that. And again, I guess that's the final note. And I'm assuming if I click this, is that right, Tom?
It is.
All right. I went the wrong way. Oh, I ran it, questions? All right. You know, again, this is, it can be frustrating for councils to have somebody show up and tell them what to do. The citizens of Maricopa, past councils, current council, have already made decisions about what to finance, why to finance it, and when to finance it. The rest of this how-to finance is simply a myriad of federal tax laws and state laws. It can be frustrating where you have to put your trust in me, and put your trust in Tom, and put your trust in the markets. But the bottom line is, you've already, your citizens and the council have already made the most important decisions about what, why, and when. The how-to is, again, just a myriad of laws that ensures that when you sell your bonds, the holder of those bonds will not have to pay federal or state income tax on the earnings they get from the bonds. So with that, I'll step out of the way, and Phil, I can answer any questions you might have.
Before we move to questions, we have a speaker card for Mr. Henry Wade. Would you like to approach?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Henry Wade, 42581 West Shemile Drive, Maricopa. I think the point was just made in that the citizens have already decided what they wanted to do. I come to you as a citizen agreeing to what's taken place, but also to ask you to think further about what's vested in this community. We're about to close a school. And we're going to close a school because we don't have $1 million. And we're talking about spending 33. I think that if we are vested in this community, as all the rest of the community members are, I'm proud of what we're doing here today. But I'm asking you to talk to your constituents, approach the people who voted for you, and support whatever effort that may come down in the future about what we're going to do with our schools. And this was a perfect place to discuss that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions for?
For Tom, actually. Couple of questions. I think there's still mention about what the public wanted in 2008, I believe, in November, and the bonds that were issued in 2010. I think there's still some confusion of reading headlines regarding tonight's topic and so forth. Some still public confusion about that. If you can clear up, how much, what's the total outstanding debt that was issued in 2010? How much is remaining? And what is the amount of going forward that we might, the ceiling is? I know I can read it on the agenda, but if you can reiterate what the maximum would be, and what the voters did authorize in 2008, what that number is? If you can go through those numbers, again, for the clarity of the public, what was voted on, and what council has and has not done to this point?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor and councilmember, that's actually a really good question. I'll hit the outstanding amount on the $20 million that was issued in 2010. I don't have that exact number. I believe we've made one principal payment. It's probably a little bit south of $1 million on that. So 9-point-whatever is remaining outstanding as we sit here today. I'm not sure if you have that information.
It's 18.2 remaining.
18.2 remaining on that $20 million. When the voters authorized $65.5 million to be issued, you can only issue $65.5 million once. When the first $20 million of debt was issued, the remaining authorization was 45.5. Depending on the principal amount of this issue, if it's $33 million, it's $33 million from that 45.5 million, which would mean that there would be remaining of $12.5 million that the voters authorized that could be issued for this ballot purpose. One of the constraints, so that's one constraint. That's the constraint on the voter authorization. Another constraint is a state limitation. We can only issue 26% of our assessed valuation. Basically, if we said we have the means to operate an additional facility for that remaining $12.5 million, based on our assessed valuation, we could not issue that $12.5 million right now. The only way we could issue it is if we waited several years, we paid down principal on these outstanding bond issuances to get us below that statutory limitation. I know it's a little confusing, but there really is kind of two restrictions. We have the authorization to issue an additional $45.5 million, but we do not have the capacity at this point. We have the capacity to issue about 40 million of that, roughly 40 million of that 45, but we're only going to issue 33 of that at this point. And I hope I answered that question.
Okay. So just to sum it up, the total outstanding now is $18 billion.
Yes, that's correct.
18.2. And as Mr. Swartz suggested, that we're not authorizing anything else. We're just going through the steps up to June to go to the market, possibly going forward tonight. And the most that we could do is 65 million. That's what the voters approved. However, with the restrictions provided by the state within the guidelines, we're capped based on property values and so forth, what we can authorize as a council, even with voter approval. Is that correct?
That's correct. The only way we could issue the remaining piece of that to get up to the 65.5 is if our assessed valuation grew again, or we waited long enough to pay down principal. That's the capital end. A very different issue, sort of related, is if we built another facility, do we have the means to operate it? And you all understand our budget situation, the transaction privilege tax situation. But that's just another thing that we would have to take into consideration as well.
Okay, thank you. And I do have a question for Mr. Swartz. In 2010, the bonds were issued, I believe, in February, if memory serves.
Yes.
And then, at that time, was the Build America Bonds, and they helped stimulate the economy, and subsidize interest rates and so forth. And that's no longer in effect, correct?
Correct.
All things being equal, I know things can change between now and June, if this even goes forward. Where would the interest rate stand, given a 20-year bond that was issued in 2010, if that's the same general direction that the marketplace sees, and you advise and so forth, compared to 2010, where we are today?
Generally speaking, the market is at historic low rates, even compared to 2010. We haven't, in my industry, we haven't seen these rates. And at the time, I was only three years old, but since the '60s. So we're looking at historically low rates. You will benefit from that. How well you will benefit from these historically low rates depends on what kind of rating we can get for the city of Maricopa. A proxy rating for us is the Maricopa Unified School District, which is rated on a scale of AAA being the highest, double A being the next highest, they're a single A. And we anticipate that, based on the information we've seen, and the information we've generated, and how you benchmark to other communities, we feel reasonably confident that we can get you a low A rating. In which case, if all of those facts prevail, we can expect to see a range of rates, beginning in bonds that mature in year 1 to year 20, as an example, ranging from about 1/3 of 1% in year 1, .33%, out to approximately 4.25%, 4.5%. So it's going to range, there's what we call a yield curve, depending upon each year that your bonds mature. So we, right now, based on current market activity, you have rates as low as .33% for the first year, out to roughly 4.5% in the final year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Councilman Brown?
During the National League of Cities Conference some three weeks ago in Washington, one of the discussions that were being bandied about that the House, I don't know if it was Ryan's part of his concern or not, was to see to if municipal bonds would no longer be tax-free. Now, if that were to happen, the thought would be to be killed in the Senate. But that would be rather devastating if that were to occur, become a reality. It was discussed.
If you care, I can comment on that. There are municipalities like Maricopa throughout the United States that are engaging their congressional delegations in these kinds of conversations. Simply put, the United States is unique in that when a municipality or a state sells bonds publicly or through other means, they sell those bonds in what's known as a tax-exempt structure, whereby the holder of those bonds does not pay income taxes on the interest payments they receive for holding those bonds. And so, a simple analogy is, a city of Maricopa, say, 4.5% bond would be equivalent to an IBM or a Microsoft bond of, say, 8% because the after-tax yield, the after-tax benefit, is roughly the same. And so, in the United States, we're unique. We're the only country that does this the way we do it. And there are a lot of interested parties that are embedded in this that want to see this tax-exempt bond structure survive. Now, with that being said, there will be, if any legislation makes it through, and we can't forecast whether it will or it won't, I would suggest it probably won't. But even if it did, there would be a grandfather period of those who issued bonds where it would still retain its tax-exempt status for the life of the bonds. So it won't be the case that you will retroactively be expected to pay higher interest if the tax-exempt status goes away. But simply put, there are a lot of people very lathered up about this. And the likelihood that it will pass both the House and Senate is deemed to be remote at this time.
One more question for you. As it pertains to the sale of the bonds in which you were talking about retreating, or holding on to that given week, obviously, we're looking to get the very best bang for our buck out of that. But that being said, I guess my question is, in your experience of selling these bonds, and we're talking $33 million worth, which to us is a lot, to the market, it's a drop in the hat. But yet, who is typically the buyer? I mean, are they pension funds? Are they big amounts? And I guess as an underwriter, is this typically an all or nothing? I mean, if we sell 75% and not the last 25, what happens then?
Sure. The way we're structuring this sale, we're asking interested underwriters to submit a bid. Whoever submits the lowest, what we call true interest cost, which takes a lot of things into consideration, whoever submits the lowest true interest cost wins the bonds. They are awarded the bonds. They give you cash, they take those bonds, and then they, in turn, sell them to the public. That's a slightly different sales method than what I call a negotiated sale, where I could tell you who our targets were. Since we're just going to let underwriters buy the bonds, and then in turn, sell them, we can't really direct them where they're going to sell them to. But based on recent sales we have done for Flagstaff Unified School District, for the city of Chandler, the city of Tucson, the city of Scottsdale, we expect, because Arizona taxpayers get a double tax-exempt benefit. They don't pay federal income taxes on the bonds, and they don't pay state income taxes. We expect there to be substantial, a substantial amount of the bonds to end up in the hands of quote-unquote "retail" or mom-and-pop investors. The second category of investors would likely be bond funds that specialize in Arizona municipal bonds, where they buy a number of bonds, and then investors buy into that fund. They get into that fund, so they're diversified. The third group that we would anticipate buying and holding these bonds are insurance companies and others like that that have an appetite for fixed income. Pension funds, because they don't pay taxes, don't really see the advantage in tax-exempt bonds. When we sold the Build America Bonds in 2010, they did have taxable rates, and the federal government is sending you 35% of every interest payment you make. So you essentially get subsidized down. In that case, pension funds went crazy over those bonds. So I would say, it would, mom-and-pop retail, bond funds, and insurance companies would be the primary buyers of these bonds.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to ask staff to address a question that wasn't posed, but I think would be helpful for you and the general public and one of our speakers this evening. As you know, the voters, as we talked about, are the ones that approved this project. And they've approved that bond funds would be used to pay for this project. So I would like staff to please go up and explain to the public and to you what would happen if we do not issue these bonds, what would happen to that project that is currently under construction. So if you could please provide the council and the public that information, and how we would fund this project, or would it be basically boarded up?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, to address what City Manager Fisher is talking about, to remind you all, we have under- to remind you all, we have under contract currently approximately $40 million worth of improvements under contract currently. In the ground today, as far as improvements go, I would say we have about $4, $4 million worth of improvements already started. You have walls going up, you know, you have mass grading completed, and the, the project would, would have to come to a halt if we did not move forward with the additional. So.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Can I have a second, please? Motion seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, can I, all in favor, say aye? Aye? Motion carries. Perfect. Well, thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Thank you very much. And our motion for E-session is still open, or?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Okay. So, motion for an E-session then, please. And a second?
Seven.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you again, we'll see you in two weeks.